New leadership at City Hall. Hear how six new council members plan to take on Seattle's most pressing issues. That's next on Seattle University Conversations. Now your hosts, Professor Larry Hubbell and Joni Balter.
Welcome to Seattle University's Conversations Program. Tonight, we will talk with all six new members of the Seattle City Council in two groups of three. Together, these newcomers represent the biggest change on the council in more than a century. We begin with Rob Saka, District 1, Joy Hollingsworth, District 3, and Maritza Rivera, District 4. Dr. Larry Hubbell, take it away.
Rob, I'll start off with you. Councilmember Saka, the pieces are all in place. It's showtime for the mayor and the new city council that he largely agrees with. How will the new city council operate differently from the last city council? And could you please give us some real examples, something that citizens will actually notice?
Yeah, so first off, thank you, Seattle University. I'm honored to be here today with you all and share this space alongside my fellow council member colleagues. Quick, I just want to quickly, before I get to that excellent question, I want to set expectations. I heard some very flattering things about a very distinguished panel. At least for me, I'm just, you all have hosted world-class leaders in various distinguished fields, and I'm literally just trying to be the king of potholes in Seattle. That's it. So just want to set expectations there. But, so, if I understand the call to your question, Dr. Hubbell, correctly, what am I, how am I going to be different than, you know, previous iterations of the council? I'll say a couple of things. One, I am here laser-focused on results. And I think that is one thing that we've somewhat lost sight of recently. I have, I spent the last 10 years of my professional career helping businesses of all sizes be successful. Before that, law school. Before that, 10 years in the Air Force, in Air Force Reserves. And so I am here to treat my work, our shared work, like a business where we set ambitious, smart goals, if you will. We closely track and monitor progress against those goals, and we hold people and organizations, individuals, including ourselves, accountable for those results. So that's number one. The next thing I would say, how I, excuse me, specifically intend to be different, is I intend to bring a more collaborative approach. Rather than figure out ways to thumb it, you know, like to pick fights with the mayor or any of my fellow council members, it is true that I think the mayor's agenda is substantially aligned with my own and my own priorities. But rather than, and we're not always going to agree, same thing with, you know, my fellow council members over here. But rather than pick ways that we can disagree and look for fights and look for quarrel, I'm looking for collaboration. Collaboration first. It's not me versus you or us versus them. It's we together. So, you know, those two things and more are how I intend to be differently. And also making sure that we make decisions that are fully transparent, fully informed by community, and making sure communities felt listened to and heard, but doing the right thing for the greatest number of us. So that's how I'd answer that.
Thank you. Next one is for you, councilmember Hollingsworth. Let me put the same question in another way. What do you think the previous city council did wrong?
That's a terrible question, but, thank you.
Get a tough one in there.
Okay, so I will say what, one of the biggest changes that I think people will see from our council is us being in the office. I think that is huge. That has changed the tone, that has created connection, the camaraderie. You're able to get a lot of stuff done, not sending emails every day, but just going down the office, going down the line and being able to talk to councilmember Saka or councilmember Maritza, or hey, you just passed someone in the hall, hey, can we talk about this legislation real quick? You're able to do that in person, and I think that's what the previous council potentially was missing, and I think that's one thing that we're bringing to the table.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera, you've got six newcomers on the council. Do you see yourself as a voting block? And is there enough cohesion among the new members to produce noticeable change in the city?
Thank you for the question, and thank you to Seattle University for hosting us. It's really great to be here. I would say, yes, we have enough cohesion because we all have mutual respect for each other. We understand that voters voted us to come here to work together and to collaborate, to agree to disagree when we can't agree, but to hopefully have more agreement than not. I wouldn't say we're necessarily a voting block, excuse me. That remains to be seen. We haven't really voted on much yet. But I do, as councilmember Saka pointed out, and councilmember Hollingsworth, we are very collaborative already. We came, we built relationships before we came, we started at council. And so already you're seeing us working together in the office and really making a concerted effort to build relationship so that when we have to take the tough votes, we have a relationship, you know, professional and collegial relationship that we could fall back on when we, you know, at some point may disagree on something. But I have no doubt that whether, that if we disagree, that we will move forward together because we all are interested in making sure that this city is progressing in a positive way. And that, I believe, to my core, that we all have in common.
Councilmember Hollingsworth, you have been a big supporter of the Seattle Police Department, particularly the East Precinct, the target of many public protests, as we all know. Why is it so important for you to support that precinct specifically and SPD in general?
Yeah, we've had a ton of, it's, we have to recognize a lot of the public safety issues that are going on in our city, and one of those are being our low number in police staffing. And so at any point in time at the East Precinct, we have 10 officers that are responding to all the calls in their area, and that's definitely concerning. So we understand that we have to increase our staffing, retention, recruiting as well, also officer morale. And there's also the accountability piece as well, and that's a two-way street, ensuring that our officers are really building trustful and meaningful and transformational relationships, not just transactional, but transformational relationships with our community. They know the people, they connect with the people, they understand the community, they're guardians, you know, of the community. And I think that's really, really important as well. And so that's where that, you know, respect comes from our police department and understanding that they are tasked with a significant job with, you know, being first responders, including our Seattle Fire Department, including our Care Department and our gun violence prevention programs. I mean, there's a whole list of people that are responsible for public safety in our city, and we understand that we have to be, it's a multi-pronged approach.
Perfect segue to the question for you, Rob Saka. What is the right number of police officers for Seattle? I saw something like one number currently deployable officers, 937. I also saw 950. But, you know, what is the right number and how will you help the city, which is really having trouble recruiting? How will you help the city improve that?
The right number is, I don't know if there is a magic right number, and I think, to be honest, I think, I think, I think all of us collectively and individually, we get too hung up on numbers. What is the right number of officers? Or like, how many, how pro-cop are you? Like, how many cops you want to hire tomorrow? Or how anti-police are you? Like, how many are you going to take away? I think, I think, respectfully, I think that's the wrong question. I think, I look at officer staffing from the lens of what, what should be our ideal response time for a Priority 1, a Priority 2, and a Priority 3 call?
Okay, so are you satisfied?
And then, and then, and then working back and backing in staffing to that. So, but, but by-
Let's do it your way and start with the response time that we currently have and at least address the shortfall on that.
Yeah, so response times today are not where they can nor should be, and we need to do better. And Priority 1 call response times are decent. The Priority 2 and 3 and like worse, they're horrible. I've sat, I've taken volunteer shifts, sat side by side, 911 frontline call center operators, and I've seen the, and I've listened into the calls, and I've seen the mounting queue of calls that ideally would warrant, would get some sort of police response, but because of lack of staffing and personnel, it was going to take hours and in some cases, days to respond. So all that is to say, I think the better question, as we talked about, is what are the response times that the community deserves and expects? And as I understand it, I think for a city of comparable size and geographic scope as Seattle, we should have between 1,400 and 1,500 deployable officers. I do support the mayor's plan to hire 1,400 or to make sure we have 1,400 deployable officers.
Councilmember Rivera, we have learned recently that female police officers are having some difficulties working at SPD. How can the city improve their working conditions and their retention on the force? What do we need to do?
That's a great question, and as you all know, we all started not that long ago in our roles, so I believe this report recently came out yesterday, and I want to learn more about the experiences of our female police officers in the department. Obviously, our police department should be inclusive to women and people of color. When, you know, our police force should be representative of the citizens of the city. And so I want to dig in and learn more about why the situation is the way that it is and work together to find solutions to really make sure that we are addressing the needs of the officers that are already working at the department, because this goes to something that councilmember Hollingsworth raised, which was the retention issue, or maybe councilmember Saka, you raised it as well. And so, you know, we really need to have conversations and learn more about the situation and how we can all work together with the department and the mayor to resolve it.
Councilmember Rivera, got another question for you. The city faces a $230 million deficit. Should this deficit be addressed primarily by reducing costs and thereby cutting back on some programs, or primarily by raising revenue?
I think always the knee-jerk reaction is to raise revenue. I've been a big proponent of accountability to the city budget. I think that we need to look at the programs, our departments and the programs that they're administering, and making sure that we are using taxpayer money wisely. And I think it's going to be a combination of things at the end of the day, because $200 and almost $50 million is a lot of money. I do think that we haven't done a great job as the city of Seattle to really look at the programs that we're administering and making sure they have the outcomes that were intended when we made the investments in those programs. And that's what I'm very laser-focused on, is making sure that we have accountability to the taxpayer dollars as we're engaging in this budget exercise and not have the knee-jerk reaction to just raise another tax in order to fill the gap. Because it doesn't matter how many taxes you raise, if a program is not doing well, we're not utilizing taxpayer money well, and we should be.
Councilmember Saka, if there are cuts, what discretionary programs would you fight to protect?
Quickly, I want to finish closing out that question because I think it's instructive of kind of how I think and approach the, whatever, insert your issue. I start with, what is a specific goal, outcome, or objective that we hope to have? And the policing context, you know, understanding priority, like what kind of response times people expect is really important. Also, making sure that we restore and build trust between policing, police and communities, and there's just no way you're going to be able to do that if we're, if police are constantly on a response and reactive posture, showing up when times are not good. We need more proactive policing, community-oriented policing, and bike patrols and foot patrols and et cetera. So like, that's my starting point. But back to your, back to your question, and if I understood correctly, it was on budget, did you ask, help me understand?
If there are cuts that had to be taken, what programs would you fight to protect?
I'll fight to protect all of them that are aligned with the priorities of this council, not councils from, you know, last year or 10 years ago. I will fight to protect programs that are showing initial results and capable of further progress. I will fight to work collaboratively with communities to make sure, you know, to fully understand the community's perspective in all this. You know, difficult decisions are going to have to be made, and, you know, that's going to require a mixture of consolidation and making sure that our spending is, we are avoiding duplication of efforts, and we don't have, like analyzing our various lines of businesses. And if we have one agency doing two or three iterations of substantially the same thing over here and two or three agencies, we need to better harmonize and consolidate that. So it's going to, it's going to be a complex exercise, not just one thing.
But at this point, can you give us any specific programs that you would, you think are so important that they shouldn't be cut?
I am, I am committed to learning more, like five weeks in. So I am committed to learning more. I don't even sit on the budget committee, but I am committed to learning more, you know, about the opportunities that we all collectively have together to solve this 250 million plus, you know, like a budget deficit that none of us contributed to, but now we are thrust in a position of helping the course correct. And I'm committed to doing that work alongside every last person on the stage, sitting down there and not represented here in the mayor's office.
Councilmember Hollingsworth, should we change how the jumpstart tax is used? Currently, it goes to low-income populations, including housing. Do you see it as a possible solution to the budget deficit?
Can you repeat that one more time?
The jumpstart tax.
Yeah, okay. And your question is-
I think it should be used in another way.
That's something that we're going to have a discussion about when we're talking about budget. I think everything is on the table, but one of the things that I know that we'll be definitely focused on protecting just from our offices, arts and culture, anything that is engaging with youth, anything that has youth empowerment, that is a part of the public safety piece that I think we often miss because we're so focused on police, fire, EMT, care, like the first responders, but we're really concerned about the preventative piece and ensuring that our kids have stuff to do, ensuring that they are engaged, connected, and also that they have additional resources. When we talk about mental health, we also have to talk about arts and culture. It's not just about them seeing a therapist, it's also about arts and culture and engaging them in those positive activities. So those are something that our office will be, you know, centering and ensuring that we're fighting for.
Councilmember Hollingsworth, moving along to graffiti. Oh, did you want to jump in? Go ahead.
May I add something actually, because councilmembers, as councilmember Saka said, it is about five weeks in, but I will say that we can talk about priorities, and this is something we've all talked a lot about. And to councilmember Hollingsworth's point, public safety is the number one priority for all of us. And the programs that are addressing public safety are ones that we all have in one way or another agreed need to be a priority. And in terms of the youth, I mean, councilmember Hollingsworth and I have had many conversations about the importance of programs that will, preventative programs that will address public safety and specifically gun safety, because we know, for instance, sadly, a child got killed in councilmember Saka's district a couple of weeks ago. Just Friday, there was a mugging in councilmember Moore's district at Ingram High School involving Ingram High School kids, all of them. And then we also had, we saw muggings in Ballard and at Roosevelt, so really across the city. And so we really need to be preserving programs that will address public safety, student safety, and address the preventative pieces amongst the youth.
Councilmember Hollingsworth, the Ninth-
And transportation.
All right. I'm going to get this question out, I swear, someday. But councilmember Hollingsworth, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals recently ruled that Seattle can enforce its anti-graffiti law. You're Chair of the Parks Committee. What are your thoughts about removing graffiti from parks and other places?
Yeah, I'm for it. I think a lot of the tagging that's going on in our city, especially on public places, is not wanted. And, you know, a lot of it, I talk to business owners all across our district, and they have, they spend thousands of dollars. Seattle Central College spends hundreds of thousands of dollars for graffiti removal. The BIA on Broadway spends hundreds of thousands of dollars for removal of graffiti on private businesses and private homes. You could talk to a ton of people that are spending a ton of money where it can be invested into other things, but I do believe that there should be spaces that are designated in our city for that type of creative, that creativity, right? There's some, there is some artwork that's done around our city where I'm like, yo, if that was done in a different place, that'd be amazing, right? But it's on the side of a private business that probably does not want it there. And so if we can be able to have, like, right down the middle, if it's like, hey, we cannot have graffiti and type of, you know, certain type of tagging done on certain public spaces, I see it on crosswalks, I see it on signage, I see it on different things where people are not able to utilize, you know, public assets. And we can kind of focus on, are there designated spaces to be able to steer a lot of the young people that are doing the tagging, to be able to, you know, have spaces for that, and then for us to enforce those laws that you cannot just go and tag on anywhere that you see fit.
Councilmember Rivera, the state legislature is moving to allow even numbered, even numbered years for local elections. What do you think of that idea? Do you think Seattle would want to go along with that? And do you worry, and you have to pack this all into one answer, and do you worry that local issues might get lost in the loud noise of a presidential or congressional campaign?
That's a great question, Joni. I don't have, you know, a strong feeling about the elections, you know, on even number y- I mean, I will say that on presidential years, we see an increased number of people voting. And one thing that I think is really important in general, regardless of whether we go to even number years or not, is the, we need to get folks to come out and vote. You know, your vote is your voice, and we're here in a university, so for young people especially, your vote is your voice. And I think anything that will help us get to a higher percentage of people voting, I mean, most of our elections, the highest, I think, was like a 43% of people to come out and vote, which is not even half of the population in each of these districts. And so anything that will help that, I think we need to look at.
I have, I have strong feelings actually on that. So, so again, I think we should look at the specific goal and objective of whatever, insert your challenge, we're trying to address, and I think with this, it's a valid one, is to increase and drive voter engagement and participation. I am not particularly convinced that, you know, giving this specific proposed bill will do that. I think there might be less intrusive and, yeah, less intrusive ways to help do that. For example, in '23, when the year we all got elected, there was four elections, four elections, in a odd year. And so, like, maybe one thing worth exploring would be to, you know, like all those levies and all those proposals and all those special, like that every, it's exhausting for voters. It's exhausting. So maybe we say, you know, like, you must shoehorn your thing into like the August primary or the November general and have two elections, the odd year elections at two. But, but yeah, it's a valid goal. I just think there's potentially better ways that haven't been fully explored to do that.
I do want to say, we have the highest, one of the highest voter engagement because we do absentee ballots, and I think we are very fortunate in the state to be able to do that. You look at other states, they do not offer that. People stand in line for hours to just cast their vote, so I think we're very fortunate in the state to have absentee ballots.
Councilmember Rivera, the mayor's downtown activation plan is still a work in progress. How will the mayor's plan, in your view, significantly increase foot traffic and revive the central business district?
That's a great question and one that I've been talking a lot about this week. I really think that the mayor's done a great job with addressing the challenges of downtown, and I know that the city has worked together, he's brought together a lot of the city departments under the leadership of the Office of Economic Development to try and address the issues downtown. And I know that there's been a lot of investments and a lot of great organizations to do activations downtown. At the end of the day, if we don't have the foot traffic downtown, I think it will be really challenging to get downtown back on track. So I would love to see city workers come back full-time in person downtown and also the county. The city right now has two days a week in person. I believe the county has not required any days in person of county employees, and so we need to partner with the county on that, if that is still accurate. And then, you know, we need to lead by example. And by the way, there's an equity issue here because our blue-collar workers, who are usually our low-income earners, they're the ones that have been working in person through the pandemic. And so when you think of equity, all the folks that are, you know, our white-collar workers are the ones that have the privilege of being able to work from home. And I don't think that's equitable, and I also don't think it's helping our downtown. And so I think this is something that I will keep talking about and that I feel really passionate about.
Councilmember Saka? Let's dig a little deeper into the downtown activation plan. One of the great ideas for improving downtown is changing zoning along Third Avenue to increase residential development on that street. To do that, the plan would adjust building heights by more than 100%. Does this, do you think this has a prayer of achieving its desired goals?
Yeah, so I am less familiar with that specific aspect, the downtown activation plan. I would personally would need to learn more about what the impact that would have on the neighborhoods, the surrounding buildings, and which community, in specific communities. But we need to bring downtown back, and I think everything is on the table. We just need to carefully understand the impact, be able to look around the corners and understand, you know, what are the likely consequences. Not to say we won't make decisions, being fully informed of any reasonable, like reasonably anticipated consequences, but let us fully understand that first.
Could I just say one thing? Downtown is the front porch of Seattle. It's the economic engine to our city and economic engine to our state. We have the seventh-largest port in the entire country. We have to start looking at having residential downtown. Look at our friends at Vancouver. Right now, we used to laugh at them because they built residential with commercial space downtown. People were reverse commuting, but now their downtown is active and live more than anything. And so that's what we need to have in our Seattle, is activity downtown, but we also have to make it safe.
In 30 seconds, can any one of you tell us what's missing from the mayor's downtown activation plan? Just one thing that pops to mind.
I'll start. Really want us to, arts and culture. It's not going to be J.C. Penney or Macy's. That's going to bring downtown back. People want to go to entertainment. Think of young folks, think of millennials that want to go and experience things, and our older population, they want to be able to go experience things downtown.
We are out of time for this part of our show, but we're coming right back with three other new Seattle City Council members. Thank you all so much.
Potholes!
And we are back with Seattle University's Conversations, now joined by three other new members of the Seattle City Council. Kathy Moore in District 5, Robert Kettle in District 7, and at-large member Tanya Wu. Thank you all for being here.
Councilmember Moore, Seattle is not San Francisco or Portland. We're doing better post-pandemic, but Seattle is still not at its best. What is the most important thing we can do to get closer to pre-pandemic times?
Well, first, excuse me, thank you everyone for having me here tonight and to Seattle University for hosting this very important conversation. I think that the most important thing that we can do is address and hopefully make tremendous progress on our homelessness issue. In any neighborhood that you go to, and particularly downtown, and you were just talking- In any neighborhood that you go to, and particularly downtown, and you were just talking about the downtown activation, a critical, fundamental piece to that is dealing with people who are on the street, dealing with the public disorder, and just the sense of discomfort, both at sort of seeing the human suffering that's going on. And so as Chair of the Seattle Human, excuse me, as Chair of the Housing and Human Services Committee, I also serve on the King County Regional Homeless Authority. And one of the things that is going to be very important for us this year, as you know, there's been a fair amount of dissatisfaction with the way the Regional Homelessness Authority is operated. And it's going to be incumbent upon us, the new leadership, to really take a hard look at how well that authority is working. Does it need to reallocate money to have a greater emphasis perhaps on tiny house villages, looking at making sure we have greater funding in rapid rehousing and keeping people housed to begin with? So I think there are many challenges ahead of us, but the first one is to really address homelessness in a very thoughtful and proactive manner.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettle, you are the Public Safety Chair. You've said many times that you want to dismantle the culture of permissiveness in Seattle. If you have your way, what will actually change?
Well, first, I just want to, as others have, thank Seattle University for having us. And, you know, it's interesting, first time meeting you, but often I've met Joanie, and basically I just close my eyes and think midday show, Bill Radke, and so it's good to be here and to have this engagement. And, you know, it hearkens back to those conversations that we hear with those shows. To your question, yes, I am the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. In fact, we just had our first Public Safety Committee meeting this morning. And we laid out what we're going to do with the committee. First, you know, the primary mission areas, which is crime and security first and foremost, but then also fire, rescue, and alternative response. And third, being emergency preparedness. And there are some secondary mission areas, and then foundationally, we also have our accountability and oversight roles as well. Key to crime and security is addressing the permissive environment. So today, we talked about a strategic framework to address the permissive environment, and there are six pillars to it. Number one is we have to fix SPD staffing. Two is the legal tools, the ordinances and the like, looking at those. Three is the vacant building lots. And I'll add on that point, I've had some great conversation with Chief Scoggins in terms of what fire is dealing with, with these vacant buildings. But like what I saw in Belltown and other places on walkabouts, and we see those challenges and how it contributes to the permissive environment. Pillar four, as mentioned earlier in your earlier set, graffiti. We have to address the graffiti piece. Five is public health. And like I said many times on the campaign trail, you can't succeed in public safety if you don't also succeed in public health. We have to build the capacity on this piece, on that pillar. And that ties into the last pillar, which is, we as a committee need to work together, and we will, the collaboration piece, but also the council, and then with the mayor, in a one-Seattle way. So then we can engage the county and the state, because the county is responsible for public safety. Issues like King County Metro or King County Jail, on the public health side, where's the five care centers and the like? And they have that responsibility from a public health piece. And I've noted, you know, on the state, engaging with the state, they're responsible for mental health. Imagine out of 50 states, if we were number two in mental health spending over the past decade, instead of, you know, five years ago, we're like 46 or so, now we're in the 30s. You imagine if we were number two, sorry, I meant Seattle University, but the way our dogs are in college football, and what that would translate in terms of capacity, like hospital beds, but what kind of capacity would that generate on the public health side, and how that would impact our public safety piece? So those are the six pillars to hit and address the permissive environment that's been built up in our city over the last number of years.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu, downtown has lost 2,200 businesses since the beginning of 2020. Given that a lot of the workforce still works from home, will downtown ever recover to levels experienced prior to the pandemic?
I believe it involves reimagining what downtown looks like, building more housing, letting downtown become an arts and cultural center for the city, and as well as looking at making sure that public safety is enforced, that people feel safe coming to downtown. We have a lot of amazing events coming forward, FIFA soccer in about two years, and I think we just have to really focus on downtown. The reactivation plan is amazing. How do we focus on getting people to come down to downtown, stay for dinner, go to the theater, and shop, basically? And so I believe that, you know, it's an ambitious goal to go back to pre-pandemic standards, but I think we can do it.
So going back to the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, Councilmember Kettle, we have spent millions of dollars and a lot of time trying to create this entity. Is it time to call an audible and move beyond this model? And I imagine, Kathy Moore, you might want to jump in here, but to move beyond this particular construct for solving our very serious homelessness problem.
It's frustrating because we basically have had a two-year false start with the KCRHA. And it reminds me, when I was on the Queen Anne Community Council, hearing Mayor Murray's team come to the council and briefing, hey, we have this emergency, here's our plan for Seattle and homelessness. And in that briefing, I was listening, I'm saying, this plan's not going to work, the Spanish control is wrong. And it was frustrating to hear, and here we are eight years on. And then we have the KCRHA. Similar problems in terms of, like, its business operations, in terms of, you know, doing the nuts and bolts. It's kind of like what Councilmember Saka was saying earlier. It's about getting to the basics and the nuts and bolts of local government and doing those things right. And we have a big problem there. In addition, the, you know, the governance structure is terrible. Who has three boards? You know, in this school, you would never teach to have three boards. It's one board, maybe an advisory council. So those are two main areas that get fixed. And if we don't fix them, it will never be a regional approach, because we won't be able to get North and South King County.
Do you think we should abandon that particular idea?
I believe in a regional approach. So the window is there, and it's getting shorter, but it has to address those two points. Otherwise, it's a trouble.
Councilmember Wu, as the appointed member on the council, you have, you know, limited time until your next campaign. You have said many times during the campaign that you want to improve the lives, you know, of everybody, but particularly citizens in the Chinatown International District. What are a couple of things you feel you can accomplish on the council before, you know, your time runs out?
Yes, I do have a short time and trying to get as much done as I can during that time. And I've been told, like, treat this time as if this is the only time you will have on council. So I approach it with that mindset. And I think representation and making sure that diverse voices are heard, especially with my background in trying to reach people who are the furthest from government, and try to get them involved with city and being heard especially. And so I think trying to get diverse voices together, collaborate, and bring them on to city council, get people involved in government, and let people know that there are resources available and making sure that connection and collaboration is there.
Councilmember Moore, the First Avenue Streetcar has an ever-increasing price tag. Should a city facing a deficit cut the cord on this project? Let's be honest, nobody knows the real price of this. There's not exactly screaming ridership on the other two lines. Isn't this an obvious budget cut? And yes, I know that it's a capital expense to start with, but once it needs extra money, shall we say, from the city, it could become an operating expense.
So I think this might be one place where there's some daylight between myself and Mayor Harrell. I am not a supporter of the First Avenue Streetcar. When I was initially running, I thought, this is a wonderful idea. We can connect all of the different streetcars and have the connector. But each of those, the First Avenue Connector, the South Lake Union, they too have struggled. They have not been perfect. And then when we learn what sort of the technical difficulties and challenges would be with the First Avenue Streetcar, and then just the enormous amount of money that would be spent on this, I do not think that in this time of budget difficulties and deficits, that this is really an area where we should be putting so much public funding.
Councilmember Kettle, several Seattle neighborhoods have been struggling with parked vehicles that remain in place for some time. What will you do differently to enforce the parking rules?
Well, there's two things here. One, there's the general piece where you enforce the, you know, you create those standards and you enforce it. Probably to your question, this is where we need to think about, you know, what are we doing and learn the lessons of the last eight years. And one example that I keep coming back to that I like is the, and there's some challenges with its location, but the Salmon Bay Village Project on Inner Bay near the Ballard Bridge. And the reason why I bring that up is because, you know, they've created a perimeter fencing that you can't see, and there's a gate guard, there's a counselor on site, there is, you know, public facilities, like the dining facility and laundry and the like, and there's rules that relate to that. And then they bring the RVs off the street, which is the big issue in terms of your question, is those RVs. Because bottom line is, and I know this from my experience, anytime you get five RVs, like in Nickerson on North Queen Anne, soon you get a drug market. Once you have a drug market, then you have a stolen goods market going on. So we need to work these issues, and this is one way to do it, where they bring the RVs off the street, those that are, you know, long-term parking, and they bring them in, and those individuals are working with the counselors. And then there's this transition to the tiny homes that are a part of the project. And then they move on from there. And that's the kind of project that we should be looking at and that incorporates those lessons learned. And it brings those RVs off the street that have been parked, as you're noting, and then, you know, work with those individuals to help them be more successful as they move into some type of supportive housing.
Specifically moving to tiny homes. Councilmember Moore, going back to the Regional Homelessness Authority, there is some sense that the agency's resistance to tiny home villages was short-sighted. How do you feel about that?
I would have to agree with that assessment. I think that there were personality conflicts that got in the way of being able to really thoughtfully and critically think about what are the best methods of moving people into a form of shelter. I also think that the cumbersome governance structure has also contributed to the dysfunction around those issues. So the one thing that we hear regularly when we talk to Unified Care Team, when we talk to Reach and Just Care, is that people really want to be in a tiny house village. They will agree to move, and we need to have more of those. And we often hear, you know, we have to meet people where they're at. Well, we are meeting people where they're at when they tell us they want to be in a tiny house village. So I think it's important that in this context, that we put aside sort of ideological positions, we put aside our personal grievances that have arisen over the years, and look at what works, what will people do, where will they go, and really direct our resources to that. And additionally, there's a group out there called Solid Foundation Northwest. They have been building many of the tiny house villages. They have a fantastic plan to really upscale. So we need to, we need to put our money and our resources in things that work. And so far, tiny house villages, they're not perfect by any means, but they are working in getting people off, out of tents and off the street, and that is our first priority.
Councilmembers Wu and Kettle, I want to ask you both about Seattle's care team. It's been, it's been up and operating since October. There's a new report that shows some success. Care team, for everybody in the audience, these are social workers and mental health officers who go out with police on certain calls. And I guess 40%, of the time, officers can leave within a few minutes and go on to other more serious calls. Starting with you, Councilmember Wu, what do you think about this team? And you have some very direct experience about going out into the neighborhood and talking to people who are suffering.
Yes, this past three years, I've been working with the community watch. We go out on the streets level, we go into encampments, we talk to our in-house neighbors, and we also patrol a couple of blocks. And I have learned that most of the time, we can de-escalate a situation without ever having to call police. And I think that's what's so important about this team. Sometimes some people are having an episode where they need someone to talk to, or they just need de-escalation, or they need services or resources. This is where this team is really important, building up that trust, building up those relationships on the ground level, and working with people, getting them inside and getting connected to resources.
So I wanted to get your take on the report and how well it's going, Councilmember Kettle, and can we overdo it? Can we get too dependent on this and make a bad mistake?
I don't think we can overdo it, because if you look at the numbers, you know, those kind of calls that require that kind of support are a huge percentage of the calls that are coming in. And those are the kind of calls that we don't want to have our police on. There'd be times, though, when they may be needed in terms of it's a high acuity kind of situation. But oftentimes, we have, we have the opportunity to, you know, deal with things, as Councilmember Wu was saying, at a lower level, and do it in such a way that it addresses, like, which essentially is a public health challenge. It's not really a, you know, a criminal issue, it's more of a, you know, it's more of a public health challenge. And the care kind of fills that gap, instead of having SPD come and respond, where things could escalate for various reasons. Instead, have the care team who are trained for these kinds of situations to come in and take care of at the lowest level, which usually will mean, you know, less chance of, you know, going into that, you know, the criminal side and, you know, avoiding those kinds of situations, which then cascades to other issues.
Councilmember Wu, you already made a reference to the World Cup, so let me follow up with a question related to that. We learned that Seattle will host six matches in the 2026 World Cup. And our question for you is, will the costs associated with putting on this event be outweighed by the financial benefits in your estimation?
Oh, I think that will depend on the execution. As we saw during MLB Week, that there was a large number of people who came to the downtown area, yet many of our businesses, especially in the CID, Central District, Pioneer Square, did not reap the benefits. And so how do we work together with all of our small businesses, all of our communities in this region, and draw people into our communities, into our small businesses? And I think that will involve the coordinated effort with the Seattle Sports Commission, with the small businesses, and other organizations that will help be able to bring light to diverse businesses right across from the bridge. And so I think it will really depend, and we'll have to see.
I have to jump in. As a first-generation American, my parents are from England. I'm super excited that they're coming, and it will be a benefit. Although we have to be mindful of the point that Councilmember Wu was bringing up, that we have to make sure that all parts of the city benefit. And that just goes to the smart planning. But the benefits are going to be there. You know, I've been to World Cup matches here in America, like in '94. I traveled via England to Germany in 2006. I saw how the Germans did it. I saw matches in Stuttgart and Berlin. It will be a success because they're, they know what they're doing, and the benefits are going to ripple, not just for the immediate time of the matches, but following on as well. So I just want to butt that plug in.
Thank you. Okay, this is what we call a jump ball question, so any of you can choose to answer it, or all three of you if you want. Looking back to some of the mistakes of the earlier city council, what do any of you think was the long-term impact of the defund movement?
I'll jump in first, because public safety, I chair this committee. The defund piece, in a lot of ways, is what really kicked off or really energized the permissive environment problem. And so we, we have to acknowledge, like I did today, we have to acknowledge that all communities don't experience public safety the same way, either by race or by socioeconomic class. But that's not the reason why you throw the baby out with the bathwater, if you will. We have to ensure that we have a safe base in the city. And the defund movement was a mistake because they were never going to accomplish that. And it's unfortunate that we did it, and that led to this permissive environment that we're now trying to deal with. With, you know, I'm talking about six pillars. By the way, there's a seventh pillar that's kind of too far outside of our committee. And since I have Councilmember Chair Moore of the Housing and Human Services Committee, is that the youth and young adult violence, this is something where our community's going to have to work with her community, committee to really address this. And, you know, and these are the ripple effects of those decisions made at that point. And it's unfortunate, but we're going to press ahead, we're going to make big press this year, and we're going to really turn the tide.
I guess I would add that I think one of the long-term effects was a re-depression of the morale of the police department. And we saw a lot of police officers decide to retire. Basically, they were ready to retire, and so they decided to go ahead and do it. So it has really led to an attrition in the number of officers. And it's been, it's part of the reason that we are struggling to recruit, both on a national level, we have a pipeline issue, but also I think people are feeling like they don't necessarily want to come to Seattle because of the tense and sort of fraught relationship that the dialogue around defund produced. I do also, though, want to say that I think that there was a positive in the defund. And I think it's unfortunate that it was termed defund, because there has definitely been a need for, I think, a community interest in looking at other ways to create public safety. safety, other ways to police.
I mean, look at the care team, isn't that, isn't that answering that right there?
Right, exactly. And I think that we can look at the care team as a direct result of those conversations. So it's important not to view it all as a bad thing. I think it has generated some good discussions, the care team. And I think we're finding, the officers are finding that they are appreciative of having that additional assistance and having some of that scope of work, not having to be responsible for that when they were not initially meant to be responsible. So it's been kind of a two-edged, it's had a multitude of effects, mostly negative, but a few positive.
I agree. Like, it's great that that dialogue was had and we're still having it. And we should really look at community-based solutions. But at the same time, we do need police. And so how do we look at this holistically, learning from the mistakes of our past, looking how do we moralize communities and come together going forward to create what public safety looks like, whether it's, you know, Care Team, Lead, Reach, all these organizations who are doing amazing work in the community? And going forward, what do communities want to see? And really listening to people and doing, and enacting plans that neighbors have.
The Seattle Times FYI guy, Gene Balk, says we have the fifth highest property taxes in the nation among major cities. And still, our voters are very, very generous in approving levies for all kinds of things. When is it up to you guys, the council, to protect property owners and renters from so much taxation? Anybody?
Ditto to the earlier group. I mean, the Maritza, Councilmember Rivera is tough, and so is Councilmember Saka and Hollingsworth. And I think we, as a cohort, and we as the new council, as Councilmember Saka said, it's about, okay, what is the goals? What is the objectives? And then let's work towards those, and then let's do that right. And then, you know, we can, you know, figure out the pieces that come to that and ensure that we're not doing, you know, a situation where we're butting this burden on the property owners that, here in our city.
We all door-bellied this past year and talking to a lot of homeowners who are on fixed income, seniors or elders, people who are struggling to pay property taxes. How do we connect people to resources? And, you know, we think about the people we talk to at the doors, and it's always in the back of our minds going forward.
Would you like to jump in here?
Well, I mean, the problem with property taxes is that we don't, we have a regressive state system, and so we're having to rely on property taxes to fund things that really we should be funding at a state level, a county, state, and federal level. So I think where our responsibility in the council lies is in looking at the budget that we have and being very thoughtful about, you know, we have a deficit to fill, how are we going to do that? Being mindful in terms of discussions about whether we want a new revenue source that people are already overly taxed in terms of their property taxes, being mindful of that.
So going back to some of the budget discussion for a moment, the city council has become or is becoming a little bit reliant on the Jump Start tax, but philosophically, and we're sort of doing that more with this group for some reason, at some point in the future, when the budget deficit is resolved, do you think the Jump Start tax should be eliminated because of its long-term impact on business development and retention? We're all talking about how much we want folks to come back downtown. We want, you know, companies to want to build here and have employees here. Just philosophically. Tanya?
We have to invest in what works. And so I think we're doing that exercise right now, where we're looking at how we got here to this moment and what do we need to do going forward? And that's looking at, you know, what earlier council members have said regarding taking a hard look, making tough choices, and using additional Jump Start tax as a last resort. And, you know, it'd be amazing if we could find a way to make the budget work for us where we won't have to rely on Jump Start. But I think that's, you know, we're just starting, and we're hoping to learn more.
I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, I guess I'm taken aback by the thought of removing a tax, a revenue source.
You know, that's the funny thing about taxes, once they're there.
Exactly. And so, you know, no, I don't actually think so. I support Jump Start because of the fact that it has been specifically set aside for affordable housing, for equitable development, and for Green New Deal initiatives. I guess I would like to see the evidence that it has truly affected our ability to be competitive. You look at Amazon, I think, just reported the largest profit it's ever had. So I don't think that we want to extend Jump Start to a lower range, because then you are truly affecting businesses that people don't think of as being small, but are actually small. So for me, the issue is whether Jump Start should be used to solve our general fund deficit. And at this point, I am not convinced that it is appropriate. It was passed with a very specific designation. We represented to the voters that that money was going to be spent on those particular subject matter areas. And now we're basically shifting the narrative, which I think is a disservice to the public.
Did you want to say something?
I was just going to add that, you know, first, obviously, and to echo Councilmember Rivera, we have to do our due diligence on the spending side, you know, figure out what's working. And then, as you asked a question, I remember constantly being asked this during the campaign, you know, the key thing is that we need to be consistent and fair and, you know, just be, it's kind of like being the Federal Reserve. You know, we have to telegraph, okay, we're going to need more revenue, okay? And we have to be, because that's what businesses need. They need that stability. And so we should be doing that in addition to creating a safe base, by the way. And one thing about the Jump Start check that I'm a little bit, is like, sometimes this is like targeted. We're just going to target this piece right here. If it's a good idea, then it should be a more broad-based approach. And that's one thing that I would say. And lastly, you know, we're in a changed conditions. You know, the previous council didn't have a big, you know, housing levy, which infuses so much more money. So the conditions have changed, so I don't, I don't see our council being as tied to the decisions of the previous council, as some may.
The only thing I would add to that, though, is that while we have the housing levy that's been passed as a tax levy, there is also a significant portion of it that is going to have to come from Jump Start, and that was not made clear when the levy was passed. So it's a little bit more, the Jump Start money is going to be an important piece to making the housing levy effective.
We are out of time. Big thanks to our council members for spending their evening with us. Big thanks to all of you for joining us. Good night.